Внимание. Редакция медиа холдинга Славик фэмилии не несет ответственность за содержание рекламных сообщений и авторских программ.
Добрый вечер, дорогие радиослушатели. Добрый вечер всем, кто слушает нас и смотрит нас на нашем канале Facebook Славик фэмилия медиа центр. У микрофона Тимур. Сегодня четверг, пять часов десять минут. И это значит, что у нас в эфире вновь замечательная передача. Программа с представителями организации Славик Волд и ее основатель, учредитель Двитри Сашенко. Дима, добрый день. Как у тебя настроение?
Очень хорошо. Быть очень приятно каждый раз в этой студии с вами, с Тимуром. Очень интересно.
Да, спасибо за то, что вы приходите и делаете такую большую работу, потому что знать, что происходит у нас в городе, у нас в штате и вообще в мире политики, это очень, очень нужно. И это правильно, что вы делаете, что вы вот работаете с нашей община и помогайте им регистрироваться на голосование. И также вот приводите разных гостей, которые также рассказывают очень много интересного. Я думаю, что дам тебе возможность также немножко быстренько рассказать о том, что вы делаете и также представить нашего сегодняшнего гостя.
Да, спасибо большое, Тимур. Да, сегодня у нас интересный гость. Я ее представлю чуть попозже полностью. Но ее звать Супьяза. Она представитель Грешема. Тимур может подскажешь, как правильно назвать ее?
Городской совет.
Да, городского совета. Она получила свою позицию, выиграла в прошлом году на двадцать двадцать выборах. И мы с ней уже долговато имеем такое интересную, как говорится, relationship. И постоянно переговаривались, когда вот я балантирулся тоже в этом году, она меня тоже поддерживала. И очень хорошие у нас с ней отношения. Поговорим немножко о выборах, которые прошли вот недавно. На прошлой неделе, во вторник были выборы в Вашингтоне. Я думаю, некоторые послушают и скажут, какие выборы, обычно выборы четыре раза в четыре года, да, Тимур?
Ну, обычно задают вопрос, за кого голосовать. Вот это, наверное, самый такой частый вопрос, который задается нашими слушателями. И это делается по той причине, что просто люди не знают. Мы не привыкли до к тому, что вот получаем такой огромный помплет. В этом помплете у нас много слов, много картинок. И нужно как-то покопаться, почитать и узнать вообще, как бы кто этот кандидат и какие как бы, ну, он представляет ценности. И поэтому как бы люди просто не имеют достаточно, наверное, знаний. И многие не говорят по-английски так хорошо, чтобы просто посвятить себя, сесть и выучить каждого кандидата. И потом как бы про кого-то проголосовать. Поэтому очень часто люди звонят и просто спрашивают: вот скажите, за кого? Кто больше к нам склонен? Мы за этого и проголосуем. И было даже несколько случаев, где люди просто приходили, стучали к нам в двери, говорили, вот приносит с собой эти помплеты, эти бюллетени и говорят, вот помогите нам, расскажите как бы кто. И я вот помогал некоторым людям, но как я помогал? Я брал, читал и как бы рассказывал и далвал возможность таки людям самим сделать выбор. То есть я не говорил никому там за этого, за этого, но просто вот как бы перевел и уже люди там сами делали свой выбор.
Да, да. И вот да, наша организация уже состоится уже где-то два с половиной года. И наша была задача примерно то, что ты говоришь, принести какой-то материал, помощь в этом, в этом вопросе. Да, потому что многие люди задают, спрашивают, за кого голосовать, как голосовать и в общем насчет выборов. И мы видели, что есть большая, как говорится, нужда в этой теме. И у нас на сердце появилось такая, такая, ну, такое желание в этом помочь. И не только я один, и нашлись другие братья и сестры, которые в общем мы в таком, в таком понятии и начали уже где-то, ну, как сказал, два с половиной года назад и уже существуем уже не малое время. И два года мы примерно ездили по церквям, по разным мероприятиям и проводили разные мероприятия. Проводили разные мероприятия в смысле зарегистрировали людей голосовать, потому что мы знали, что наши славяне часто не голосуют. И почему они не голосуют? Потому что они не зарегистрированы. И вот наша была цель долгое время это делать. И я бы сказал бы, неплохо мы провели это время. И за это время мы познакомились со многими очень интересными людьми, познакомились с разными представителями города, представители округа и так дальше. И вот Супьяза это одна была из них, которая мы познакомились и начали иметь такое очень интересное общение. И значит выборы, которые прошли в этом году, вот в этом Вашингтоне, да, у нас были в Ванкувере и в Портленде. В Портленде было где-то два месяца назад, а в Ванкувере вот на прошлой неделе. И я бы сказал бы, что посмотря на эти два, два выбора, да, большая разница в том, что я увидел, что в Ванкувере чуть больше люди активны. Обычно на такие выборы люди выходят и голосуют около двадцать, тридцать процентов в общем в штате, примерно такие номера. Мы увидели, что в Портленде люди намного, немножко меньше активны в этом, на счет этого вопроса, примерно двадцать, двадцать пять процентов. А в Ванкувере тридцать, тридцать пять процентов. И что это говорит? Если посмотреть, посмотреть на представителей и вообще, в общем, что происходит в Портленде и в Ванкувере, видна разница. Потому что в Ванкувере люди чуть больше активны и там немножко порядок, больше порядка. Потому что мне кажется, что люди, которые балантируются и выигрывают, они, ну, имеют больше такие понятия и ценности, какие у наших славян. И вот мы, что постоянно говорим, нужно больше и активнее на этом, на счет этого вопроса. Голосуйте, продолжайте голосовать каждый год, каждый год есть выборы. Если вы не получили бюллетень и вы слышите про выборы, не просто, ну, не отлаживайте это. Я советую, что вы звоните нам, звоните в студию, звоните Тимуру, я думаю, он подскажет и мы поможем и объясним, где найти эти бюллетени. Потому что если вы не зарегистрированы, один, вы не будете получать бюллетени. И два, если вы неправильно зарегистрировали. Вот в Портленде такое интересно, что если вы такой даже есть, есть такое, что неправильно можно быть зарегистрировано. И вы не будете голосовать во всех выборах. Такое есть. И это значит, если вы зарегистрированы, как говорится, анноффелередвор, беспартийный, да, вы не будете голосовать где-то в половина выборов, которые проходят каждый год. И это очень печально. И это, конечно, хотелось бы это изменить, ну, такие, такая система, такие правила. И вот если вы состоитесь в такой статусе беспартийной, я надеюсь, что вы выбрали бы хотя бы одну из двух, трех, которые имеют большой, ну, статус или активные в Орегоне. Мы все знаем, что есть партии волюканцы, есть демократы. И если вы хотите иметь какой-то голос, чтобы голосовать, вы должны хотя бы в одной из этих две быть. Если вы не будете, тогда опять вы будете пропускать очень много выборов. И эти выборы, которые вы пропускаете, я хочу, чтобы все слышали, эти выборы, которые вы пропустите, если вы не выбираете, это одни из самых важных выборов. Как ты думаешь, Тимур?
Я думаю, что да, действительно это очень важные выборы.
Да, потому что эти выборы, эти выборы решают, какие будут кандидаты на главных выборах. И часто, к сожалению, очень хорошие кандидаты просто не, не попадают на выборы.
Потому что недостаточно пиара, недостаточно вот информации.
И вот если, я знаю, что часто люди открывают в ноябре, да, выборы, бюллетени смотрят, смотрят все плохие кандидаты, ни одного не нравится.
Задаются вопросы, почему?
Да, почему? А вопрос, ответ в том, что в мае, в марте, в июне, когда были предварительные выборы, там были все хорошие кандидаты. И, к сожалению, они проиграли.
Ну, вот эту стигму, этот стереотип нужно просто ломать и об этом говорить, чтобы люди действительно могли делать правильные решения. И действительно как бы переживали о том, что происходит в этих промежуточных выборах.
Да, да. И вот мы с Сует поговорим немножко, как важность этих выборов. И если вы будете понимать нас, я думаю, вы больше мы углубимся в этот вопрос и также поговорим насчет этого вопроса. И вот надеюсь, надеюсь, вы останетесь и будете нас слушать и продолжать с нами. Если даже, кстати, вы можете нам позвонить, если у вас вопросы, если вы можете нам звонить. Я напомню, напомню телефончик, пять ноль три два три восемь девять ноль ноль ноль. Тимур, мы берем звонки, да, правильно?
Да, мы можем принять ваши звоночки или смс сообщения.
Да, вы не забывайте, если вопросы появились, звоните, мы будем рады ответить. И мне даже очень интересно, где нас слушают, какие города, какие округи. И звоните, говорите, какие ваши вопросы, и мы будем отвечать как можем. Значит, опять я уже закончу эту тему насчет, которые прошли сейчас выборы в Вашингтоне. Я бы сказал бы, неплохие выборы прошли или неплохие результаты. Вот я уже говорил. И мы видим, что те кандидаты, которые мы рекомендовали, когда я говорю, мы рекомендовали, мы не говорим, что как Славик Вот организация рекомендует кандидатов. У нас есть организация, которая, отдельная организация называется SV Action, которая Лилия Жукова, которая с нами раньше работала, она перешла на ту организацию, открыла и открыла тем статусом организации, где она может рекомендовать. Мы это не можем делать, она может. И она рекомендала, рекомендовала многих хороших кандидатов. И мы видим, что многие из них выиграли. И опять то, что многие вышли и проголосовали. И вот готовьтесь, в ноябре будет дальше выборы, будут выборы тех, кто выиграли в этих выборах. Они будут уже балантируться против, как называть, инкомбентс, те, которые сейчас находятся.
О, тяжело, это нынешние. Да, вот как бы если у них не появился соперник, да, то они просто как бы просто сами по умолчанию будут. Их срок будет продлен.
Да, да. И вот многие хорошие есть кандидаты, которые будут проходить на уже ноябрь главные выборы. Мы оставайтесь с нами, мы будем об этом больше говорить в будущих передачах. И будем из этих некоторых из кандидатов приглашать сюда, кстати, на следующей неделе. На следующей неделе у нас будет очень интересный кандидат или интересный гость. Многие, кто понимают английский язык, даже может ее знают, ее звать Хайди Сэн Джон. Она очень известная женщина, известная тоже подкаст своей имеет передачи. И я думаю, если вы знаете ее имя, я думаю, вы уже знаете, что она будет очень интересный гость. Подключайтесь на следующей неделе, будем больше говорить насчет этих выборах. Про все, что происходит насчет школах, происходит, что сейчас насчет, как называется, вакцина, вакцина, да? Вакцина, вакцинации насчет всего этого мы будем говорить больше в деталях на следующей передаче. И как лучше навигировать в это все, да, как сказать навигировать, как это все?
Как находить ответы и как выбрать правильные, делать правильное решение?
Я бы хотел бы быстренько поблагодарить наших спонсоров. У нас есть много разных спонсоров. И мы благодарим им, благодарим и также фэмили, Славик фэмили, что они нам дают такую возможность. И сегодня я хотел один из, пару из наших спонсоров поблагодарить. Это Пельмени Пельмени. Очень классная фуд карт находится в Донтауне, где очень вкусные пельмени, приходите. Также Dream House Construction тоже очень хорошая construction company и Red Hills Construction. Вот эти наши, одни из наших спонсоров, которые нам помогают быть сегодня здесь. И в общем в эти последние два-три года, где мы работаем, они нас поддерживали финансово. А мы, конечно, не зарабатываем деньги на этом, они помогали нам с финансы, на счет материала и разные материалы, чтобы делать. Большое. Рай. Это awesome. И is it national or is it just northwest?
It's international.
International, wow. That's amazing. I didn't even know that about you, so that's really cool.
It's made right here in Clackamas for a few more years. They've grown out of their space and unfortunately because of so many taxes and whatnot, they've decided to move over to Central Oregon, where it will be a little more affordable to do the business.
Have you heard of that pizza? Have you tried it?
I've heard of the pizza. I haven't tried it as well, but the packaging, you know, I remember the packaging. And I've seen it on the shelves of local supermarkets. And, you know, I'm also not a very big pizza guy.
Yeah.
But definitely now that I know the roots and, you know, the original owners of the company, I will definitely give it a try. I mean, my kiddo, he does enjoy eating pizzas, so I'm sure next time that I'll go out there.
And it's a homegrown company, employing about a hundred people.
That's awesome. And now that I think about it, I think I have one sitting in my freezer. And the reason I got it is I think I had a coupon. It was like either discounted or free to try it out. And so I'm looking forward to trying it now. I'll have to pop it out and try it out. Well, thank you, thank you for that. And obviously, there's a big Slavic community in the Gresham area. And that's why, you know, we've had such a great relationship. And by the way, thank you for endorsing me or was endorsing? Endorsing me during the last election. That was a very big help and that was a really interesting process. I've learned a lot and I continue even more passionately encouraging the Slavic community to run, get more involved. And in general, just to get more active in the process, because we see what's going on and a lot of us are not happy about it. But at the same time, a lot of us are not doing anything about it. So what would you tell the community in general? You mentioned briefly already to be active, but you know, what do you usually tell people, you know, when they see something and they're not happy with it? What can they do about it?
Well, they can write their, they can write their government, so you can write your city councillor, you can write your county commissioners, your state legislators. But you can also get involved and you can get involved at whatever level you feel comfortable in. That could be city council, it could be committees. We have several committees, because we try to open up our city to everybody in the community, so they have a voice. And I felt that we don't really hear much from the Slavic community. And I think that is a disservice to the community, because it's a great voice that needs to be heard from. And it's, it's a voice that's different from the voices we usually hear from. And so it's a good opportunity to start on a committee and be a volunteer and see how the government runs. Or something that you're very interested in. We just held invitations for people to apply for our parks committee that we're going to have. We have, I think there were, I think there were eleven committees. I can't remember right now off the top of my head, but there were several committees. And you can go right onto the greshamoregan.gov and just type in volunteer. And you'll be able to find different positions that you might want to apply for, whether it's the rules, the small businesses, the grants that we give out, the parks, is I believe done for now. I think you had to apply for that by now. But you never know what's going to come up.
How effective?
Resign and they need someone new, I believe. You know, sometimes like planning commission or urban forestry commissions, those commissions, design commission, they have people coming off and on that are rotating every year or so. And so there's those opportunities too.
How effective are those committees?
They're very effective. They're very, they're very well listened to and their opinion counts. You can also get involved in your local neighborhood association. You can be part of that just by being on their, the zooms now, the zoom meetings that they have. And we do have quite a few opportunities for interpretation. So even at our city council meetings, if you want to speak and you need an interpreter, we can supply that for you. So it's not just that it has to be in English. And same with some of these committees, they will do that for. They really feel it's, we want to incorporate everybody.
Right.
And this area out here has a lot of languages that are spoken. But we're willing to do that, because we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity.
Right. Well, I would love to just dive deep more into the, in general, the whole board. So how many board members are there and or city councillors? Can you tell us a little bit about that and maybe briefly their responsibilities and things like that?
Sure. There are six city councillors and a mayor and the former government we have in Gresham, everybody has an equal vote. The, the management, day-to-day management of the city is done by the city manager. And we just hired a new city manager that started in late June, early July, I believe. And Nina Vedder came from Colorado and she's our new city manager. And so she runs the day-to-day. The council and the mayor is supposed to just set policy and not be involved into the day-to-day hirings and.
Operations.
Operations.
How about budget approvals?
We do the budget approvals. We're part of the finance committee and or the budget committee. And we have finance committees. And again, I've only been on here for eight months and everything Zoom. So it's not like I'm in an office and can talk to people. I feel like, you know, my learning curve for this is, is even though it's been, we're eight months into this, I feel like in any other business I've done, I'm one month into it. And the ability of being able to learn and reach out to people. So I might not remember all the exact names.
For sure, for sure. Well, thank you. And so the communities they mentioned that people can get involved in. Do those, do they make the executive decisions or they essentially go through the city council and they vote on the, after those decisions are made?
Most of them are decisions made by employees of the city brought to the council for approval. So it's very rare that the council will not approve somebody that's been recommended after the city employees have gone through the applications and interviewed and given us their recommendations.
Okay, so if, is there anything that, you know, the city council can do to help? For example, I know that the Slavic center here, you guys have been trying to open up a Slavic center and we briefly talked about it. What can, you know, is there any resources that the, that the, that the city council can do to make that a possibility?
Well, yes and no. We can do that definitely through grants that come in. Unfortunately, in the city government in Gresham, the tax base that we have, I believe, is the second smallest in the state of Oregon. So the amount of money that we bring in through the tax base, which should run our police, fire, parks, isn't enough to even cover our police. But the opportunity is there definitely through economic development and through the grants that come in. So places that people could go for help for that would be, one, you could also go to the Chamber of Commerce. Gresham has a great Chamber of Commerce that's very helpful. You could go to the Economic Development, Small Business through the city of Gresham or the Small Business Administration through, that's a partnership with Mount Hood Community College that's in the area that is very good at helping businesses understand what needs to be done and how to develop your business. Even if you don't have one, you just have the idea. The small business group in the Rockwood area, they do a phenomenal job of helping businesses get up and going.
Right. And Тимур, I know we briefly talked about it before this program. And I don't know how public you guys have been about, you know, thinking about opening up a, a cultural center. But have you guys worked with the city council at all? And what's your experience with that? Could it be better? Could, could, your experience?
We have, you know, been talking about it for a very long time. But again, you know, I feel like there needs to be a separate, a separate way of doing things, especially when it comes to like, you know, smaller ethnic nonprofit organizations. Because, you know, that one size fits all, it, it sometimes it just doesn't work. You know, if you have a, you know, a business is a business and then a nonprofit, you know, there needs to be other ways of, you know, trying to support, support those kind of grassroots efforts, especially, you know, if you think about it, a lot of nonprofits were doing work that the government wasn't able to accomplish, were out there supporting the community and out there trying to get them involved into certain things. And, you know, I have been to a couple of sessions with council people before. And it's just, you know, it, it, it's, it's a little difficult, especially for ethnic groups. I feel like, you know, getting that process and getting it going.
It is difficult. And, you know, it's interesting the difference, being a businesswoman and doing business for thirty years and coming into government and trying to understand why do things take so long? Because they do. And it's, it's sad. I mean, last year we had to increase the fee of seven dollars and fifty cents on the water bills every other month in order to help with police and fire. And that's only for eighteen months. And we haven't done anything yet to figure out how we're going to replace that. So we're at the point now, it's, we have to do something. And it takes years for those to happen. As far as the cultural center and the, and the community centers, we don't even have just a community center in Gresham. Which is really sad, really sad. And, you know, a few years ago, they brought it to the community for a vote. But unfortunately, it was a small community center with a pool. And the pool was what dragged the community center down, because it's very expensive to maintain pools. And when you have college pool and three, four high school pools that are not being used all the time, you know, I'd like to see us work together with groups and make the school pools available to the community. So then we can take the ideas of the community center and build that for the community through the city. But you also have to look at it, do you want the city to be making the rules for you?
Yeah. Well, it's very interesting, because, you know, especially for immigrant and refugee communities, we sometimes don't understand exactly how the government functions, because we come from areas where, you know, processes are a little, a little bit different. And when you told us that, you know, the, the police and the fire, they all operate from the taxes that are being collected. And there's just not enough taxes being collected in order for those important services to function, it kind of makes sense. So the city itself is probably also relies on other sources of funding, correct? Like, could you tell us a little bit about other ways that the city pulls together the funding in order to, you know, have police presence, have fire people respond to fires? And, you know, it's very interesting to know.
It is. And it's something that I feel if we're all more educated and understand more, we would be able to make new decisions that would help. So with the income that comes from the property taxes, that's what I was talking about for the police, fire and the parks. There are, there's income that comes in from metro, that we voted on these different taxes that supply money back to the city. There are state funds that come in. The schools are funded completely different. It's not through the city budget. So there are several of those types of grants, federal grants that come in. Right now, because of COVID and the American Rescue Act plan, there'll be twenty-seven million dollars coming into the city of Gresham from the federal government. And we are going to have a decision on how to spend that twenty-seven million dollars.
The cultural center, the community center.
Well, you know, I don't think that's on the list right now, you know.
I guess it's, I mean, you know, always. I guess it's, I mean, you know, always, uh, down, down, down the line in the priority lane.
Well, plus if there's nobody there today talking about it, because, you know, we do have a new mayor and three new city councillors. And we have three councillors that have been on there for less than six years. Mario's probably been on there for eight years, you know, so we don't have this cohesive group that knows and understands and under, knows everything that's been coming in for us. So when the, when it comes to the funding, you know, if we're not, if we don't have safety in our city, we have nothing. There's no use of having a cultural center or a business in this town if it's not safe. And over the last several years, we've continued to cut our police and fire and we can't do that. Uh, I actually sent an email asking for the, um, city to recommend in that twenty-seven million dollars, three million for the fire. Specifically, and I'll take this one little point, there's so many different things. But our fire has had to cut back. The growth in Gresham has been huge. So if you go back twenty years, we have less firemen today than we did then, and the growth is huge. And the fire stations were built many, many years ago, so they're not necessarily in the closest spot where they need to be for the populations we have today. But on a fire truck or engine, Gresham has gone to the three-man system. So there's three people to each vehicle. But if somebody calls and, it's my understanding, if somebody calls with a medical emergency that's a heart attack, they need four people there. So Station Seventy-One and Station Seventy-Two might both have to go out. And now you have six people and two huge vehicles that are very expensive at a place where we only needed four. Plus there's nobody at those two fire houses right now. So if another call comes into them, someone from a farther fireplace, firehouse has to come in, which means it takes longer. So the time it takes to get to a place is much longer than it should be. The amount of people we have, based on federal guidelines, is much less. So this three million dollars could be a Band-Aid, but it would be a three-year Band-Aid to bring in two more people a day in a rescue vehicle. So like a Suburban or an Expedition, you know, a small, not a big fire engine, fire truck, which is much less expensive and be the two people that go to assist the three on the truck or the engine. Um, so there's things like that that we can do. There's things like that in the police. Where we have the Parks and Recreation Committee that I was talking about applying for. We're going to put together a group of up to thirty people, which is awful lot to make a decision. So it might take a little bit longer than you would want. But in order to do the parks and maybe have a recreation and have a community center, that'd be part of Parks and Rec. We probably have to go out to a vote to the people and see if they want to do an additional bond, additional monies. So that's a start.
Difficult, yeah.
And then you have the, you know, the, the fire right now is going through a committee and trying to decide, how can we do this? They might want to come for a safety bond. And people are tax burdened in this town, not with the, not with the taxes that are going to the city of Gresham. Cause Multnomah County gets more of your tax dollar than the city of Gresham gets of your tax.
How much are they, how, how effective are they? Or how, how much do they influence on what you guys do?
Well, we, we have different rules. The, the county is more of the social, taking care of the social end of it. That's why police, fire and parks, that's the majority, you know, that's the main of your city government, taking care of, of that. But it is disproportionate, disproportionate based on how things were going way back when Measures Five and Seven went through years ago and where Gresham was with their tax base at that time.
What, what kind of relationship you guys have with the commissioners, uh, Multnomah County Commissioners?
It's a great relationship. There's different people that have spot-on relationships. And, you know, me being new, I haven't met that many of them yet.
Right.
Um, but I have like Commissioner Stigman, I've known her for years from her days clear back to, we met in, uh, the Gresham Chamber years ago. And then she was a city councillor before she became a commissioner.
Right, right. So you, you, um, have you guys, you guys ever collaborate on projects?
They're always collaborating, even our, our, our homeless and houseless population, people in, places like, um, I'm just having a brain fade. I can't think of it right now. But, um, all of that that is done for people transitioning into needing help in homes, whether it's buying a home, renting a home, temporary homes, houselessness, homelessness, is mostly done through the collaboration through the county and what the county does for us and the Metro dollars for homelessness that are coming in.
Right. That's awesome. I, I want to pivot to a different, uh, kind of direction a little bit. Thank you for sharing all of that. Um, um, so I, as you know, you know, the community that lives here, majority of them are, you know, uh, came here as refugees, Christian refugees and, and, uh, you know, faith-based, uh, big families and things like that. And I didn't have this question on here, so I apologize. But, um, I know that you, uh, you've put on a few different, uh, events. I don't know if this was like a, uh, a, a city event or was just your personal event, but you've put on a few prayer events or something like, can, can you tell us a little bit about that? And if people are interested to attend those, um, you know, what, where they can, where can they find those, those events?
Those are, those are personal events. They're not city-sponsored events, although I have held them at the city hall. I started doing prayer events, um, back when we were having the riots so prevalent last summer and praying for our police and our city and our government workers. And then it just has come into praying for the country in general. The last one that we had a couple of months ago was just in general praying for the United States. I don't want to lose our freedoms.
Right.
COVID is an awful horrible thing. And, but we also, we deserve to have our freedom. We deserve to be able to listen to the facts and make our decisions and be respectful. But we also need to keep, make sure that we don't run that fine line and start losing our freedoms. And same with, with our, our faith. That's why, you know, it's not city-based, but I, I, I am a Christian. I'm, I, you know, I believe that that's an important part. And if we had more morals today, we wouldn't need, I don't think we'd need as many police today if we,
Right.
we had more people of faith than,
Right.
but I don't want the government to tell us that we all have to be faith and have a, have your Christian card.
Freedom of religion, right?
Somewhere.
Freedom of religion.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, and that's what we all came here for, right? The Slavic community, you know, as, as you know a little bit.
And that's why we need your voices.
Yeah.
Because there's a small number of people that don't feel that way, that have the voice of government.
Yeah.
And they need to know that there's other voices out there.
Right. And so did you grow up, uh, from the, you know, from, have you been a Christian for a long time or did you grow up as a, you know, as a Christian?
In the Catholic Church. And when I was in high school, I, uh, became a Christian, not that I wasn't before, but I really made that commitment. Yeah.
How, how important to you is your faith and, and, uh, how passionate are you? Tell us a little more.
Um, I think that, um, God has really made me more passionate since I started running for office. You know, it's kind of funny because, um, we ebb and flow in life and everything.
Right.
And, um, unfortunately, many years ago, I got divorced and I felt bad about that. And I kind of withheld myself from, from God, but I still attended church. I just wasn't as active in things. And over the years, I, I felt that forgiveness and that that it should not stop who God wants me to be or anybody to be.
Right.
And so I've realized in the last several years that I need to work towards that woman that God intended me to be. That's why I'm here. I have a reason, as we all do. And I shouldn't stop that because of mistakes, because we all, or, or things that make you feel uncomfortable.
Right, right. Do you feel like, um, your faith drives your passion for the, you know, the civics work that you do, the, uh, being as a city councillor? Do you think that's part of, you know, part of it?
I think it's part of it. I think that my parents kind of instilled the idea of giving back. My mom worked one day a week at the Catholic Church cleaning it when I was growing up. And I, I, I just think that that was part of it. For me, I think that the, the fact that what we are told in the Bible is so important. And although I can't remember all of it or know all of it and you need to continue to read and remember, I know that it's very important to love your neighbor.
Right.
And, you know, it's, even being on council, it's, it's a reminder that God loves everybody. Cause sometimes in politics, it can seem, well, there's a lot of people that hate me, that call me names and, and at first it was very, it hurt. And, um, but God's brought me through that. It still hurts, but it doesn't hurt the same because I know I'm doing what God wants me to do and, and I'm forgiving and I know he forgives me when I mess up. And I'm asking for prayer for people that don't, that do things to me that I don't think are nice and it, so I think I've gotten stronger in my faith over the last two years.
That's awesome. Well, thanks for sharing that. I know that, uh, as we talked about, you know, the, the community is very, that's very important to them. And, uh, we do see this, um, some, you know, slow taken away from, from the religions of freedom and the other freedoms that we have. And it worries a lot of people and a lot of people are moving out of the city. And I, I believe, you know, more people are moving out of the Portland area into Gresham and Portland and Clackamas and, uh, Vancouver area because they feel like, you know, Portland is not as safe anymore, uh, for those people.
And Gresham, that's one thing I've loved about Gresham is there's been many faiths here and there's many people that are, are not of a faith. But we have been a community that has always been loving to each other and helping of each other. You know, nothing's perfect. It will never be perfect on earth, but it's been good. And I think that having faith helps people in the morals of life. And the more we can help that way, the less likely somebody is to hurt their neighbor.
Right, right. Well, thank you. Um, I know that listeners are probably listening to us and, and wondering about the recent, um, developments that have been happening with the whole mandatory masking and vaccine. And people might be losing their jobs in the next few months. Um, I guess, what are your thoughts on that? And, uh, we, I've, I've, I've received a lot of questions about it. And I know that, uh, where I work, we've, we get, we, we probably had more calls in the last day than probably in the month, just on that alone. Um, and, uh, how do you, how do you, uh, how, how do you tell people to navigate that? And what do you, what do you suggest to them?
You know, whether you are for or gets masks or vaccines, we need to hold our freedoms. And so, you know, it's a fine line again. We want the evidence. We want to know what we should do, but we need to figure this out. Because I'm actually surprised that we haven't heard of people saying that they're, they're suing because I can't go to work if I don't take a vaccine. Now, whether I take the vaccine or not, I shouldn't need to know whether you take the vaccine or not. To me, that's a privacy issue. That's a health issue that, you know, if we're gonna go, it's a slippery slope.
Yeah.
And I think that people need to stand up for what they believe in, whether you believe on either side of it, and make that known instead of being told you have to do this.
Right, right. Well, thank you for sharing that. And, uh, I'm sure this is only the beginning of, uh, us getting questions about that. And Timur, have we been getting any questions or anything like that? Just curious?
We've just been getting some messages of people listening to, from different areas. There are some people listening in Vancouver. Uh, somebody said they're from Happy Valley, um, Gresham, so.
Well, good, good. That's good. I did ask that question where people are listening from.
So, uh, going back to the city of Gresham, can, can I ask a question about what's happening as far as like, you know, we see a lot of development going on, lots of new, uh, homes popping up. What is going on as far as that goes? Like, what should we expect? Uh, is the city expecting more growth or, um, why would, why are we seeing so many new buildings?
Well, the real estate market is crazy. And, um, Gresham is one of the more affordable cities in the entire region. So it is a place that people are coming to because there, it's not affordable anymore where they've been living. As far as building goes, you will continue to see more building. We are in the process of going through, um, a housing analysis and taking that analysis. And we have to do this every, every so often. And we need to make sure we have enough land for the next twenty years of housing. And will Metro bring the boundary out so we can build more? And that's another area where it gets a little tough because if Metro holds the line and growth has to stay within this area, it becomes more expensive.
We're gonna start going up.
If we can push, well, then we have to change the rules so we can build up higher. Um, but if we can get the infrastructure, we have this whole area in Pleasant Valley, um, that is part of Gresham now. But we don't have the money for the infrastructure. So we need to figure out how to do that to bring in housing over there. So the more land you have, the more affordable it becomes. With less land, it makes it more expensive. And the state of Oregon passed a law, I think it was a year and a half ago. And we, the city of Gresham has to comply by next summer, by next June. And that is middle housing, if you've heard the term middle housing. And that's bringing duplexes into neighborhoods of homes or maybe a, an additional dwelling on somebody's lot like you've seen in Portland. And that, that will help with the housing. It, because it will, it will allow smaller pieces of property and smaller homes to be there for maybe the new, the newlyweds that are, need a starter, they want a home, but they don't need so much area so they can afford to get started in that area. Because homeownership is one of the best ways of creating wealth in a family. That is like the number one way to create wealth in a family is to have homeownership. So it's very important that people can start at a younger age even to have that homeownership. And having smaller dwellings in places should be more affordable so that people can get. But you're gonna, you're gonna see more housing. We need it. We have more people coming all the time.
So, um, you're saying that right now, we're kind of, um, in a, in, in, in a, in a bubble by Metro, right? So there is no places for?
We're within the urban growth randy, but according to the, the, um, report that we got just last month from the, um, organization that did the information for us, we have enough land for the next twenty years. But one question I asked them, because I know people that live on land and I live on the east side of Gresham where there's more farmers and farmland, those people are not gonna sell their land. There's several of them that said, I'm not selling my land. Now granted, one farmer just sold their land and there's two hundred and forty homes going in off of Two Eighty Second and Chase Road, which will be great for housing in the area. But there's several other large parcels out there and they're like, no, we are not selling. So although the survey says we have enough land, do we really? Because they don't take into consideration, consideration who's willing to sell and who's not.
So what about closer within the city? Like, um, I mean, I'm sure it's not a secret, but there were instances where land was, um, sold at a very discounted price. Like, how much is it? Like, what does it take for a developer to come in and, you know, build, uh, an apartment complex, for example?
Well, it's a process. They have to go through the city. They have to, they have to alert the neighborhood of what they're doing, go through that process and get their feedback. And then they have to go through the city. They have to go through the Design Commission, the Planning Commission in order to get that up and going and do that. It's not, it's not a simple process and it's not a quick process, unfortunately. It'd be nicer if it was, you know, and, and it's expensive. And if it wasn't, maybe homes would be more affordable, maybe not, but.
And the last question about housing is, uh, you mentioned like smaller dwellings. Uh, are there any plans the city has to build out, you know, bigger, uh, affordable, you know, places for people to live? You know, Slavic community, you know, tends to have very big families, lots of kids. And sometimes, you know, like one, two, three-bedroom apartments or affordable housing complexes, they're just not enough. So how are you guys, are you guys exploring a possibility of, you know, building, um, housing with more, um, more rooms?
It's, it's not the city that does that. It's the builder that wants to come in and take the chance of building something that will sell. So letting the builders that want to build in the area know what people are, are wanting is very important. You know, letting the council know that, you know, if I had twenty people send me emails and saying, we're looking for housing of this size and we don't find it in Gresham, well, that's something I could take to the Planning Commission and Design Commission and say, how can we, how can design is working with people right now that are wanting to build? And planning is working with the future, you know, how can they work together to try to accomplish this?
Well, I think the key takeaway from what Sue just said is that, you know, the, Dimitri, did you catch it? Like twenty people, right? And we've been talking in the past programs that sometimes, you know, these elections that are happening and the, the difference in, in, in votes is very small. You know, sometimes five, ten, you know, thirty voice, uh, thirty votes can, you know, change the, the whole outcome of an election.
Thirteen votes decided the city of Gresham's mayor this year. Thirteen. So it's very important.
So, I mean, when we're, talk to our community, we're always trying to, trying to stress the fact that, you know, your voice could make it or break it. So whenever we do want to make something happen, I mean, Sue, uh, Councilwoman Sue just said. make it or break it. So whenever we do want to make something happen, I mean, Sue, uh, Councilwoman Sue just said that, you know, 20 voices, you know, and we might have a, a crosswalk, right? Or, you know, a signal put in somewhere where there wasn't one before.
Instead of a bike lane that uh, usually the Slavic community is not a very bike friendly people.
A bike lane with no bikes in it.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, you know, it's interesting. We had the um, purchasing property for a park and that became a very well-known subject and we received probably 85 emails. Now granted, 75 of them were the exact same email with just different names on them. So I knew they was coming from one organization. Um, and that's, that's okay, that people were willing to put their name on it and send it in. And it made a big difference. It it made a difference in my opinion of the whole thing when we, when it was said and done because there were so many people that did the survey that wrote. Right now, I, last week, we received, I think I received eight emails about having Gresham be a no mask mandate. And unfortunately, I, you know, the county had already decided and the county makes that rule, the the health for the community and then the state overdid all counties.
Oh.
But it makes a big difference sometimes because maybe we get one or two emails on something and we hear the same 25 voices all the time. And again, that's why I'm saying I would love to hear from the Slavic community because that's not a voice I'm hearing from right now.
So the reality is sometimes, you know, 25 people are the ones who end up making the decision over and over and over again.
Absolutely.
There you have it, guys. Uh, I'm sure, you know, uh, even though we're speaking English, I'm sure some of you understand what we're talking about. Uh, it's very important for you guys to make your voice heard, so.
Well, as as a small person, a small government person, it bothers me a lot of times hearing like, how many loops a developer has to go through. So we hear so many, you know, the the cost of living is so expensive and the cost of uh, property and then cost of just, you know, developing a property. How much cheaper would it be if we were to take away, you know, take, take out the government out of that process? Maybe leave the most important stuff that actually is effective. How much cheaper would the properties be and then the development and everything like that?
Well, you know, earlier you asked me how the city gets their money if they don't have a much, enough money from the taxes. Development fees, system development charges are huge. And unfortunately, until they come up with a new system of how to get the money that the city needs to appropriately function, that's not going to change. We're trying to do some things to help. Like, I think it's a great idea to not make the the developer pay those fees upfront because then they're paying loan fees on them. Let's let them pay them in the end instead. And then they can save months of interest on that and that will help a little bit. So trying to work together in those areas is a lot. I can't give you a number of
Right.
of what that would be, but there is the ability again of let's come together and reimagine how we fund our cities. It's not working to do it by taxes. It's not enough for the city and it's too much for the people that live there. And we're not accomplishing what we need to accomplish. So it'd be nice to see if we could just get a group together and start reimagining. What is your idea on how to do this?
Right, right. And do you have something?
I was just gonna say we're, don't have a lot of time.
I have a few more, a few small questions and how much time do we have?
Uh, we have about 10 minutes.
10 minutes, perfect. Well, I want to pivot to another topic, uh, similarly to the election. You mentioned, uh, just before we started, um, there's going to be a quite a few positions opening up in in the, in in, on the election board or the um, the city council, yeah.
In 2022.
A lot of the positions are opening up and it's going to be a very important election.
It'll be a very important election.
For you and for the city. Uh, so speak a little bit about that and I had a very unique question for Timur as well, so go ahead.
Okay. Uh, yes, so as I said before, we have six councillors and one mayor. And the mayor that was elected last year, that was an interim position. So that is up for election next year again. So that position will become up and then there are three other council positions that will be up. Currently, um, in our council of six, we have four people that to this date, I'm 99% sure they have always voted together. And uh, one of them, the one that ran for mayor actually said, when he didn't win as mayor, it's okay because I have the votes on council, we have the majority. And so far, they have voted together and everything. And so that's really hard because you, it would be nice to have people that thought on their own, that were their own voices. We don't all have to agree. Um, but it would be nice to have people that say, this is how I feel and it doesn't matter how this person sees it. I'm gonna vote for how I think about this. And that may be, it may be, just be coincidental that all four have voted. Um, so we have two of those positions up next year and um.
So that'll turn, bring down, so that'll be um, out of the six, two will be reelected.
We actually have three that are up. Um, the one other position, I think that person has their own voice.
That's good.
And but two of them have always, those two have definitely always absolutely voted together. And it would be nice that we had people to have a different thought. So, you know, it's really hard when I, I look at it because I lived here my whole life and say that we have a city of 111,000 people. And I, based on how people voted for me and based on what I know and heard and have lived, I still believe that the majority of this city thinks like I think.
Yeah.
But that's not what's happening in the city government because we don't have the voices.
Right. So this, out of the six positions, uh, you're including the mayor position, right?
No, that's the seventh position. So that's one and then we have three councillors. So there's four votes up.
So the mayor position or mayor vote is kind of a break in vote? Tight, tight break in vote?
It could be. It depends on how it's said.
It hasn't been in a long time. It hasn't been.
Exactly.
Um, so, so if the two, if there is a two positions, if they, if the community votes really well and we can elect somebody that thinks like the Slavic community, thinks like you or in general, has a, their own, their own kind of, their own thought, then um, we'll have a, almost like a split, kind of a, a split board essentially, right? And and then that mayor could come in and and kind of make a deciding, deciding vote.
Absolutely, it could be, yeah. If you were three and three, the mayor's vote would be the deciding vote.
And I could, um, that could, that could start turning things around in, in, in Gresham, perhaps.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Well, uh, Timur mentioned briefly right before that he's been approached by some people uh, to run for Gresham, a city councillor or just in general running. Uh, what are your thoughts on that? Because I would be your first advocate to run for that.
Ah, yes, unfortunately, I just don't have the time or
We'll, we'll make time.
Young and a father, three little kids, it's very difficult.
Well, how much time do we have until like, what, another half a year until the campaign starts?
You probably want to start running in January or February.
So you've got half a year, half a year to kind of set your priorities straight.
But if not you, who? Maybe you know somebody.
I, I sure, yeah.
Committees that people can apply to be on so they can get a feel for it to decide if this is something that they want to do.
Yeah.
Get involved some way.
I think it's, it's important for people just to kind of know what they're also getting into and I think that information is lacking in the community. I'm sure uh, like you mentioned, that if somebody tries to be a part of some kind of a, uh, you know, um, uh, what do you call those?
A councillor?
Not a councillor, but uh, commissions. Uh, they'll be able to kind of get a feel for it and, you know, see if that's something that
Committees, right, committees?
Committees, yeah. And uh, obviously, you know, I've heard that some positions are free, some positions are paid. So my question to you uh, before we end the program is that is the position for council in the city of Gresham, is it a paid position or is it a volunteer position? I know that, you know.
I would say it's both. No, it's a paid position, but it's not a livable wage paid position. I believe it's $22,000 a year and I think the mayor is $60,000. I'm not quite sure. Um, but it's considered a part-time job for a councillor. It's um, I would say that it's probably a 20, well,
It's a full-time job.
This year, it's been more than full-time, but you know, I was told it was 20 hours a month and I'd say it's more like 15 hours a week.
So I, I, before we end the program, I did want to uh, briefly get into that because uh, we're, we're, people are listening to us, we're talking about, you know, the Slavic community running, we're having Timur, asking Timur to run. How much commitment would, and you briefly already mentioned, how much commitment would it, does it take for an average, uh, you know, city councillor position uh, to commit to this?
Um, you know, I would say that you probably would be looking at I would say 15 to 20 hours a week because every Tuesday is council day. And then we have, like, I'm on the, I'm the um, liaison to the planning commission and they meet most Monday nights. And I'm the liaison to the design commission and they meet once a month on a Wednesday for a couple of hours.
In evenings?
We have these in the evenings and some of our council meetings are in the evening, summer day, but it seems like they might be wanting to move to more evenings again. So it just depends on how much you want to take the time to learn and, and how many liaisons you want to be liaison to and whether those are ones that have a, a lot of involvement or little involvement.
And involvement means influence, right?
Involvement means time.
Time.
That's what I mean by involvement, how much time.
Commitment.
Yeah, your commitment. Because, you know, to me, it's very important and, and coming in here as a new councillor during COVID with new mayor and new everything and interim everything, it's been really hard to, for me to gather the knowledge that I feel comfortable because I want to. Knowledge is good. You make better decisions with the more knowledge you have.
Right.
And so I'm trying to get as much as I can. So I think I'm spending a lot more time than probably it will be a year from now
Right.
in the job.
Makes sense. Well, I can definitely, um, I can think of a few people in our community that would be also a great uh, candidates to run, so I'll definitely be approaching those folks and um, we can, we can talk for a lot more, but we do have time uh, that closes, you know, that's closing. So I want to um, first of all, thank you for being here. I want to thank Timur for having us. Um, and just briefly, uh, a quick announcement, just a quick reminder. I mentioned already, uh, just previously, um, that uh, next Thursday, you know, we're going to have a very special guest as well. Heidi St. John, I believe, I don't know, you, you might know her, you might not.
Know of her.
Of her, yeah. She's a, she's a, she's very popular in the community. Uh, she's very big on homeschooling and obviously we hear a lot with homeschooling. We hear a lot, you know, obviously, um, the, the election, the school season is about to start, so um, people have questions and she's gonna come in here and she's gonna answer a lot of your questions. So prepare those questions, call in and uh, can we even open up for some audience in here? Uh, if you, if you're interested to come and and meet Heidi, you uh, reach out to us on our social media, uh, best if you just find us on Slavic Vote and uh, on social media and let us know. We can, uh, I see three chairs right here. I'm sure we can fit more and uh, I think it'll be a great uh, time. Um, and uh, the week, and then just also last Saturday, we had an event that um, Lily put together that had her as a keynote speaker. So I know that the community really enjoyed her presentation and um, you can um, you might be able to find a recording of that soon. И если вы интересуетесь балантироваться на города представителя, я думаю, будут другие позиции открыты. Обращайтесь к нам, мы поможем, объясним и это не берет сильно много времени. Я даже говорил, что Тимур было бы классно, чтобы Тимур балантировался, его много кто, думаю, были бы рады его видеть на балантироваться. Ну, это его решение. Спасибо большое. Последние свои слова.
Да, спасибо тебе, Дима. Это все-таки твоя передача, ваша передача, поэтому ты делаешь большую часть работы. И как я уже говорил в начале эфира, что действительно важная работа, нужно людей образовывать, нужно давать им знания. И даже Сюб тоже вот сказала, что знание это все, да. Knowledge is everything. That's, that's what I think you mentioned during the program. And I want to thank you so much for taking time and um, coming to the program. Um, I'm sure lots of people found out some interesting things and hopefully you'll be here for a while and um, we'll be able to do some amazing things in the city of Gresham.
And thank you. And I think for the future, we can always open up the studio for audience as well. So if you want to meet Sue, uh, for example, or any other uh, guests we have, uh, I think that's a possibility. So reach out. Если вы хотите познакомиться с Sue, обращайтесь к нам, мы можем помочь.
Да. Thank you.